Good afternoon and welcome to the work session of the Greeley-Evan School District 6 Board of Education. This meeting will now come to order. Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Present.
She is present.
Present.
Dr. Brooks, Campbell-Spitz, he is president of the board today. Excuse me, Director Mash. Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lemon. And I'll say, just for everyone's benefit, that Ms. Mash will be joining us shortly. She had an event, a child's sporting event, I think, to attend. So she'll be with us in just a bit. But we need to start with our calendar review, so if everybody will take a look. What we have coming up. First on our calendar is beam topping ceremony, that is later this week, 9:15 at Heath Middle School. 28th, we have school visit to Twinton Academy of Pre-Engineering. Think you should have already RSVP'd to miss Lemon about a Boys and Girls Club annual dinner. Then on May 3rd, we do have the retirement dinner. And then, again, that one is a very important one for us, please try to make that, if you can, so we can celebrate the retirement of our teachers and principals and our staff. On 5th, we have Fred Chartis Museum Night, and then we're back to then to a board meeting on May 8th.
Could I just interrupt for a second?
Absolutely.
On May 6th, if anybody is able to go to the golf tournament, the Dream Team Golf Tournament at Boomerang, it is, I don't know, all the terminology for golf, but it says 7 to 12. I don't know what time kickoff or what is, or whatever. But it is on May 6th.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pappas. Anything else, just in the next month or so, that we need to be paying attention?
Mr. President, April 25th is the Marine Corps JRO TC Awards at Northridge. I believe it starts at 6:00 PM.
Do you know if they'll get an invite or not? We usually do.
Amy, will you check on that, please?
Yes. Thanks.
That's also the evening of the Project Search signing day and tours, which I think only involves President, Vice Presidents, and me, I think. Sorry.
Anything else, guys, on our on our calendar? Do we have that?
Yep.
All right, yeah.
Ms. Lemon, this document's been in their weekly memo?
Correct.
And this is everyone who's responded? Does Mash has responded, it looks like. But has anybody else responded? Okay.
I have responded to.
I was thinking.
I thought I had too.
You sent the invites, and then we, yeah. Do we need to?
The calendar invite, is that where you're responding?
Yeah, do we need to do something different?
Okay. I will look at those and fill them in on here, if everybody can respond in some way.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. But do please look at those and make sure that we respond, so we do want to have, we don't need all seven of us at every graduation, but it is good to have a good contingent at most graduations. So, please do look at that and respond to those calendar invites. Next up, we have our legislated update. So Dr. Pilch, maybe Mr. Fall.
Absolutely is Mr. Fall.
Nope, not at all. Okay.
Do we have an electronic version of that that we can share with Dr. Campbell-Spitz?
I shared one with the Secretary of the Board.
Okay.
So I hope she has.
She can share it with Dr. Campbell-Spitz. Thank you.
Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board, Dr. Pilch. I'm here to talk through a number of pieces of legislation. And everyone has a copy. So I just want to start with House Bill 231109, that's that School Policies and Student Conduct Bill that we've spent some time talking about in great detail. I will say to this board that on April 6th, 2023, the bill was postponed indefinitely. There is some rumor that a new bill may be introduced with that strike below that I had mentioned at the last meeting. I haven't seen a version of this bill yet, but more likely than not, we'll see a new bill be introduced that will address. And this is that bill that covers school expulsions and things of that nature, and kind of changes to how that's going to happen. So postponed definitely means that the bill has died in committee, and that they're not going to be moving that bill forward anymore. So if anybody had any questions or any additional thoughts on that?
Mr. Fall, you might just give them a two-sentence reminder of what was contained in this bill.
Yeah, so the bill originally had substantial revisions to the expulsion statute, and it required a number of changes to the expulsion process in particular. There were some reporting requirements. There was a number of days that schools had to provide documentation in advance of an expulsion hearing. It required some level of training for expulsion hearing officers in the state. And there was a cross-examination piece to the bill for anybody who had submitted a written statement in support of the expulsion. All that was stricken from the amendments that I had seen. However, I haven't seen a new bill be introduced, kind of, and that's what that strike below means. So moving on, we have Senate Bill 23241. This is the creation of Office of School Safety. This was a bill that was introduced by Senator Kirkmire, so I thought the board would be interested in hearing more about this. This bill has made it through the third reading in both the House and the Senate. It has now gone back to the Senate to consider some amendments made by the House. So what this bill does is it creates the Office of School Safety. This currently doesn't exist in Colorado statute, and within that new office, they're going to create a Department of Public Safety that's going to assist schools in preventing, preparing for, responding to, and recovering from emergencies and crisis situations. It'll offer trainings and supportive services. And so what it's going to do is it's going to kind of bring everything together under one office so that schools can look towards kind of safety and emergency and crisis response. There's going to be a school security dispersment program that's created through this bill, and that's going to help to develop and provide training programs, curriculum, and seminars related to school safety and incident response. We can get some advice and assistance from different stakeholder groups across the state in developing those training programs and how that's going to roll out. They will be implementing a school resource officer program. Right now, they use Safer, I believe, and they probably will continue to use that. Maybe they'll make some adjustments as applied to Colorado law. They will also be implementing a co-responder program through this new office that's been developed through this bill. Again, it's made it through both houses. They're just reviewing a few amendments at this time, so it's more than likely that we'll see this bill be signed into law by the governor over the next few weeks. There's also a few different grant programs that are created through this bill. One of them is really for communication. It's specific to communication. And so what is created in this department is a grant program to provide grants to schools and public safety communication system owners to provide funding for needed interoperable communication hardware, software, equipment maintenance, and training to allow for seamless communication for newer existing school communication systems and first responder communication systems. So that'll really help to streamline communication between first responders and schools to address crisis situations. I think there's some inherent good to those grant programs. Of course, a school district like District 6 will need to apply for those grants, and in order to be in order to be awarded that grant, a school would need to have a memorandum of understanding with a regional public safety 911 answering point. And then they could certainly apply for that grant, and I think that that's something that this district could do. This bill also would establish a youth violence prevention grant program. It does give some higher level of awards to for areas facing significant rates of youth violence. I don't know if that's necessarily been defined in this bill what significant rates of youth violence means. However, you know, I think that any community that does have a lot of youth violence could certainly apply for these grants to help kind of address youth violence in schools. So I think there's a lot of good to this bill. I just have it as monitor, simply because it has moved through both houses. I don't think there's a whole lot that we could do, kind of lobbying-wise, to make any changes to this bill. I just wanted to provide it for your information, and because this was a bill that was sponsored by Senator Kirkmire. Moving on to House Bill 231259, this is the Open Meetings Law Executive Session Violations. This bill has been assigned to the State Civic Military and Veterans Affairs Committee, and that was assigned on March 26th, 2023. This bill changes how lawsuits are essentially brought to or against local public bodies for violations of executive sessions. And what this bill will do, if passed, is it will give local bodies an opportunity to cure a violation without any lawsuit taking place. So there would be a corrective action that would need to take place after the meeting at which the violation of the Open Meetings Law occurred. And then for anybody who brings an action against a local public body, they would be required to take, get standing, which would require mutual communication. And if there's no resolution after that mutual communication by that complainant, then they would have standing to bring a lawsuit for an executive session. So what this means is there's a time period by which somebody will say there's a violation of the executive session or the Open Meetings Law. They would then reach out to the local public body. Then the local public body would have an opportunity to work with that individual to cure that violation. And if the local public body does cure that violation, then that individual would no longer have standing to bring a lawsuit against the local public body, like a school district. There's also reasonable attorney's fees that can now be awarded to a local public body. So let's say, again, that in that example, that individual meets with the Board of Education. In this example, the Board of Education cures that violation, that individual still brings a lawsuit forward. Then the Board of Education could recover reasonable attorney's fees from that individual because they have cured the violation. On the other hand, if that individual hasn't even attempted to work with the local public body to cure the violation, then they wouldn't have standing. So if they were to bring a lawsuit prior to making that attempt to work with the local public body, then the board, in this case, would have the right to recover fees if a lawsuit were brought against them. So this does substantially change the Open Meetings Law, at least how attorney's fees are awarded. And it gives a little bit more deference to local public bodies to fix violations of the Open Meetings Law without having to deal with a lawsuit, you know, to kind of fix an issue. I think in a lot of cases, these Open Meetings Law violations are fairly minor anyways. And so it is really helpful to have this opportunity to cure violations before we're dealing with kind of a lengthy lawsuit that can be time-consuming and expensive. So I don't know if anybody had any questions specifically about this. A lot of school districts, and I noticed that Case and Casby are both in support of this bill. I also recommend that this board supports House Bill 231259.
Any questions, guys, on this one?
Okay, moving on. So at the last meeting for House Bill 231241, there was a question about how is this task force identified for the K-12 Accountability System? So what I have done here is just listed how those 25 members will be appointed to this task force. And just as a reminder, we know that the audit for the Accountability System didn't bring a whole lot of change to the Accountability and Accreditation System in Colorado. However, it did kind of show that there is some inequity with the current model. And so what this Accountability System Task Force is going to do is they are going to look into these inequities and look to see if there's any changes that they can make, or recommendations that they can make to the State Board or to lawmakers for changes to the Accountability System. So we see that the Speaker of the House has five selections. the Speaker of the House has five selections, the President of the Senate has five selections, the House Minority Leader will have four selections, the Senate Minority Leader will have four selections, the Governor will have six selections, and then the Department of Education will be able to appoint one representative from Colorado Department of Education who focuses on accountability and accreditation. So they'll just have that a power to appoint, and that's how that task force would be made out. Any questions on this one, guys?
Thank you for laying that out.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
It was helpful for me, too.
Do we know the timeline on this, Mr. Fall?
Uh...
Anyway, so if it passes, then do we know, like, within what amount of time that the...
So as it's written, it says the task force members must be appointed on or before July 1st, 2023.
Okay. Thank you.
So rather quickly. Any other questions on that? The next thing I just want to bring up with you all is the School Finance Act. We have not seen a bill introduced at this time. I do want to point out, there's been some rumors that have been kind of shared regarding two particular factors under the School Finance Act, and it's causing some concerns with some school districts across the state. The first thing, the cost of living factor. And what this does is it really recognizes a higher cost for districts to hire and retain employees where the cost of living is higher than other districts. They're looking to potentially, rumor has it, make some adjustments to the cost of living factor. And for school districts that have a really high cost of living, this could really significantly impact how much those districts are going to receive. Again, this is really just a rumor, but a lot of school districts are pushing back on this. And so I think there's just some concerns that it's too late to be making these kinds of changes without really understanding the long-term implications. I think it could impact District 6 to some degree, but, you know, I'm not sure if I can really fully explain this without getting too far into the weeds, but just know that that's been one piece of the School Finance Act that's been looking to see an adjustment. The second piece of there would be a reduction of the five-year student count average to a four-year student count average. This would impact school districts with declining enrollment. And so what they do is they take a five-year average of the student enrollment, and they give a per pupil funding for that amount. This would lower it to a four-year student count average. And so for school districts that really have seen a significant decline in enrollment over the last four years, they would see a significant decrease in the amount of money that they would receive. Again, we're not sure if these things are actually going to be happening, but it would certainly impact districts all across the state. And as far as I'm concerned, it would impact District 6 as well to some degree.
Nate, where do you think it would impact us? Right? We haven't seen declining enrollment. I mean, I don't know. We're a high cost of living area compared to the rest of Colorado. So how do these changes impact District 6?
I would defer to our Chief Financial Officer to answer those questions. I think really, in a lot of ways, there's just long-term implications with any changes of this nature. And so if we are to see a reduction in our enrollment over some time, that would certainly be problematic. And if our cost of living goes up in Greeley, which it certainly looks like it will be, that could impact us. And I'm not sure if Ms. Sponsor has anything to add to that.
Sure. So this is really kind of unknown at this point exactly what impact this might have on District 6. But for the declining enrollment, what I've heard, shared, is that if we change from a five-year average to a four-year average, we would lose potentially 6,000 funded students across the state. Obviously, that hits different districts differently. But as a district that has benefited from this averaging over the past couple of years, I think that that's a big deal. I mean, that does help districts kind of soften that landing when you do have a declining enrollment situation. So that's a big deal, and it's kind of late in the game to be making a change like that. So that is a concern. And then just the cost of living factor. On the surface, you would think that that wouldn't impact us significantly. But that's the first calculation in the whole list of the formula. And so, just like your order of operations, when you adjust that first thing, then it impacts everything else that follows. So this could potentially impact us pretty significantly.
Okay. Thank you, Sponsor.
Any other questions? I think you're good for the next one, Mr. Fall.
Okay. And then the last bill, just to discuss, I know that there was a question about where the Stop the Bleed bill was at. This is the bill that was introduced by Representative Young. It has now been assigned to the House Appropriations Committee, and that was on April 5. What this bill will do is it's going to appropriate $150,000 over a period of three years to help the CDPHE provide the Stop the Bleed kits. And then it'll be on a first-come, first-served basis for districts that want to apply and get these Stop the Bleed kits. And that's really, there's been no changes to the bill. That's just kind of where it's at. So I just don't know if anybody had any other questions about the Stop the Bleed bill, but...
Not hearing any. You may be good on this one, Mr. Fall.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Is this next one you as well?
I believe so, yes.
All right. Because our superintendent has left us. So our next item of business is the review of book review appeal process. So, Mr. Fall, we have received information on this previously, but would you walk us through our book review appeals process once more?
Thank you, President Matthews. Yes, so let me just pull up some notes here. So as you are all aware, there will be a book review hearing tonight for an appeal of Beloved by Toni Morrison. The Board of Education received four timely appeals of the superintendent's decision to uphold the Book Review Committee's findings and recommendations. You've all been provided with those findings and recommendations. You've been provided with the Book Review Committee's findings and recommendations. And so at this time, given these appeals, the board, as the final kind of arbiter of this book, is going to be making a decision perhaps tonight on whether or not to uphold the superintendent's decision or to come out with some other finding. For the hearing itself, we are going to be providing each individual appellant some time to discuss the basis for their appeals. I will encourage board members to inquire, as they deem necessary, to really understand the basis for the appeal and to better understand the appellant's and the nature of their appeals. The four appellants, and I'm just calling them appellants, these four individuals are Jackie Bellander, Sonia Miller, Jamie Weber, and Robin Howard. You've been provided with a copy of their appeals. You've also been provided with a copy of their original complaints. So I hope that you have all kind of thoroughly looked into that. I also hope that you have all read the book Beloved by Toni Morrison, because ultimately, the board is going to be needing to make a decision, particularly if you are going to be making any changes to the superintendent's decision. It needs to be grounded in the law and in the First Amendment in particular. And I'll get into that here in a little bit. So after completion of the appellant's hearings, you're also going to hear from Mr. Wes Tuttle. Mr. Wes Tuttle facilitated the Book Review Committee as appointed by the superintendent. Mr. Tuttle will be available to inform the board about the selection and review process. He'll be available to answer any questions you might have. Again, he facilitated the Book Review Committee, and he's really in the best position to describe all aspects of its process. I really encourage you to ask questions and get any clarification that you need from Mr. Tuttle regarding the selection and the review process. I can also be available to kind of speak with the board and answer any questions you might have, perhaps about some of the legal parameters behind the board's decision at that time. And then upon completion of the hearing, after you've heard from the four appellants and you've heard from Mr. Tuttle, I would encourage the board to engage in kind of a thoughtful discussion of what you've learned from the appellants and what you've learned from Mr. Tuttle, and just kind of discuss the merits of the arguments in an open session, in an open meeting, which will occur during the business meeting. At that time, the board will then need to take action on the appeals. The board has options at its disposal. It can either move to uphold the superintendent's decision. It can move to do something else. I just want to make very clear to the board that you need to clearly state on the record issues of things like educational suitability, pervasive vulgarity. If you're going to be adding any further restrictions on the book Beloved, such as parental permission or perhaps removing the book in its entirety, that the board really needs to be clear about why it's making that decision. It needs to provide its motivation for why it's adding a restriction to the book Beloved by Toni Morrison. A couple of things that I wanted to point out as far as the nature of the complaints. When we looked into the complaints, we found that the complaints themselves, there were quotations taken from all of the complaints that we reviewed. There was a second page, you perhaps all had noticed, an addendum to the complaints that included quotes from the book Beloved. When we had originally looked into these books, when there was an email provided to us earlier last year regarding kind of these concerning books, and part of that attachment that we received included some links to an organization called the Florida Citizens Alliance. We looked into those links, and after review, we were able to determine that the quotes, including pagination and exact punctuation, matched the exact quotes from the Florida Citizens Alliance book complaint template. They have a template that the Florida Citizens Alliance uses to talk about passages from books. And I just want to point out that the Florida Citizens Alliance were really using these book complaints to determine whether Beloved is in violation of Florida law, specifically Statute 8470, or 847.012, 847.001, and 1,006.34, all of which are specific to Florida laws and not Colorado. So I just want to kind of let the board keep that in mind. And we know that the complainants in their complaints had mentioned that they had not read the book. And so they pulled these passages, and it appears as such that it was pulled from this Florida Citizens Alliance link. And I just think that that's important to keep into consideration, again, when we're talking about the board's motivation into whether or not Beloved is appropriate for this school or community. And then just to talk a little bit about some legal parameters that we are going to be looking into, again, we talked about the case PICO that really gave some framework. That's a plurality opinion that doesn't stand necessarily for the ultimate kind of precedent-setting law, but it did provide us with a lot of guidance for how a lot of other court cases have reviewed book challenge cases. I think first and foremost, when we're looking at what PICO stated, it's this issue of educational suitability or pervasive vulgarity. And so the board is really charged here in making a decision in whether or not Beloved is appropriate for District 6 libraries, particularly those libraries that the book is presently located in. The board does have broad discretion in determining the management of school affairs, including what books are available in its libraries and what level of restriction may be placed on those books. But the board's discretion must be exercised in a manner that comports with the First Amendment, meaning you can't remove books or place restrictions on books simply because you don't like the ideas contained in the books. That's why we had you read the book in its entirety, so that you can determine whether or not, as a whole, the book is pervasively vulgar or educationally suitable for the D-6 community. There's been some case law regarding specifically parental consent. Parental consent might not sound like a similar restriction to removing a book in its entirety, but parental consent is an access restriction that does give rise to First Amendment liberty interest for students. What we're doing is we're placing a condition on access to a constitutionally First Amendment right to access information. And so when we are placing a restriction on a book, like parental consent, for example, that means a few things. That means that, number one, that book has now been stigmatized, and it also means that a child can't simply go to the library to review a passage from that book. They'll now need to wait to go to the library to get parental permission to then access that book. So it actually acts like a roadblock, which does have First Amendment implications attached to it. And I just want to point out that the Supreme Court precedent calls for the most exacting scrutiny of regulations that suppress, disadvantage, or impose differential burdens on speech because of its content. And so those are just kind of some more general legal parameters for the board to take into consideration. I think it's really important that the board does state on the record, if it does place a restriction or if it does uphold the superintendent's decision, to really explain and give some motivation as to why the board is going in this direction, really explain why is this book educationally suitable, or why is it not educationally suitable? Why is it pervasively vulgar, or why is it not pervasively vulgar? Those are really things you need to kind of clearly articulate on the record in the event that there is future litigation, so that we have something to work with. So with that, I know that was kind of a lot of information, but that's just kind of a little walkthrough of the hearing process and some legal parameters. And I'm available if anybody has anything to discuss or any comments or any questions.
Can you go back to the First Amendment? Just go back in detail about that, the law about, you can't remove it because...
Yeah, so we know that the First Amendment secures the right of free speech for every person, and that freedom of speech is not only just the right to speak, but it's also the right to receive information. And so whenever we're putting any kind of restriction on a book or any kind of condition on a book, that essentially means that we are putting a burden on the individual who wants to access that information. And so it's just really important, again, if we are considering restrictions, that we are being very clear about why we are doing that. Again, we have kind of Supreme Court precedent, per se, in PICO, looking to things like educational suitability and pervasive vulgarity for why the Board of Education has the discretion to place some kind of restriction or limitation on accessing a particular book. So...
And then with that, and may or may not be the right time to ask it, but you talked about the Florida Citizens Alliance and the suitability for Florida, Florida state statute. And we are considering the community here in Greeley, Colorado. Just to be clear about that spirit of the community, correct?
Yeah, I think that that's important for this Board of Education to take into consideration whether or not this book is educationally suitable for this particular audience. And again, the Florida Citizens Alliance was really looking with an eye towards Florida statute. And you can see on their template that they have, they actually list out the specific Florida state statutes that they are kind of inviting folks to bring book challenges for. And so again, we're looking to things like standards of the community, which is an element of the board criteria, of this board's criteria, when we are looking at specific book challenges. And I did provide you all with board policy KEC and KEC-R. And KEC really does set forth some of those community standards that we have here in District 6. And KEC-R really sets forth that criteria, especially that the Book Review Committee looked at as they were making a decision surrounding the book Beloved by Toni Morrison.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fall? Mr. Fall, you said that the language and punctuation that was given on the complaint forms came directly from, I can't remember the name of the organization, the Florida Citizens Alliance, is that right? Was that true for every one of those?
So we confirmed that with a few other books. We didn't go into every single book. Really, our focus was for Beloved.
But I mean, of all the complaint forms that we received, because we received about 175, right? On all 175, was that the case?
Oh, I can't confirm that. At least for the four appellants that you'll be reviewing tonight, they all included an addendum with their complaint forms. And if you look to that third page, for example, it has Page 10, and then it kind of lists a passage, a quote from that page. Same thing with Page 11, Page 20, 26, and 11, 16 through 117. And we were able to confirm on that Florida Citizens Alliance, really just that exact language. There's even a hyphenation on Page 11 that seemed a little bit out of place, but that's really just directly taken from that.
Thank you, Mr. Fall. Mr. Matthews, welcome. Are there any... Are there any other questions regarding the appeals process for these book reviews or book complaints? All right, Mr. Fall.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, we are ahead of schedule, but we are now to debriefing the work session. And so in our debrief, Dr. Campos Spitsy from Disneyland, will you go first for us? Or, I can't remember. Maybe we should let our student representatives go first. Would you guys like to debrief for this?
Sure.
Richard, Jilly? Richard, we'll let you go first.
Okay.
Yeah, we use this time just to say how we feel about the work session and what we feel like we accomplished, what stood out to us as meaningful, what we learned. It's, don't feel like you have to participate, I just don't want to, it's included you.
I think learning about the different bills was really meaningful, and just sitting in on the appeal process for the books was also a really great learning process. And going back to the beginning, I'm excited for our graduation, so that was also...
Yeah, like, I guess this Senate bill, creation of office in school safety, I'm looking forward to see how that might affect us here in Colorado. Maybe not for the time while I'm here, but I don't know, for the future that's going to come. That's what interested me.
Thank you both. Dr. Campos Spitsy?
Sure. Just want to say I'm glad that the school policies and student conduct HB 231109 has been postponed. It sounded like it had a lot of shortcomings. And then just once again, to Mr. Nathan Fall, thank you for breaking it down for us and for reviewing the book reviews, the book review appeals process with us one more time in such a clear manner. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, thanks to Nathan and everybody on that. I'm just excited to kind of get into graduation season, honestly. Yeah, a lot of things coming up.
Ms. Mash?
I was here right on time, 4:40, for the book appeal review, but y'all are super fast, so thank you for allowing me to attend my daughter's tennis match. So maybe I will watch the video of the work session during lunch.
Did Central win?
My daughter did not win. But she played an amazing freshman who she continues will be fabulous as a senior, but great sportsmanship, great sunshine, nice facility to play on, so...
Mr. Norwood?
Again, thanks to our legal counsel, Dr. Fall, for bringing us everything. It's amazing that he can stay on top of this stuff like he does, so really appreciate it. I'm sure I'm going to have more questions for him. Very busy schedule coming up, and the weather is nice, but as I spoke with Ann on the way in, don't think winter's done just yet.
Don't say that. That's negativity there.
No, I thought, being positive.
Some insider information, Mr. Norwood.
Can't divulge my sources.
All right. Ms. Olin?
Well, I am actually going to attend a lot of the events since I'm kind of more up and moving now without the cane, so I'm excited for that. So I'm going to be probably attending most of the graduations and a lot of the events, and it's, yeah, I'm ready for summer and sunshine. Don't bring in the snow. But Dr. Fall, thank you again for that bit of information. I will agree with Brenda, I'm glad that HB 23 was postponed for now.
Ms. Pappas?
Yes, appreciate all the information. It is exciting to look forward to the graduations. And is there a way for us to do it differently than replying to the invites? Is there a spreadsheet or...
More people can tell you the question.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Fall, thank you again for the legislative update. And I also want to thank you for reviewing the process. This is the first time, I think, any of us have participated in one of these appeal hearings, so I really appreciate the repetition and just the process again. Appreciate that information. Thank you.
I don't have really much to add. We'll echo those thanks to Mr. Fall on both. It's great to have you guys, Richard, Jilly, sitting with us. And thanks for being here tonight. And graduations are exciting, and for some of us, Jilly, they are sad. So, but yeah, it's good to be in the spring, it's good to have great weather, even if it's not consistent quite yet. So that's all that we have in our work session. We'll adjourn now, and we'll reconvene for our business meeting at 6 o'clock.